Let me reach to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good. And now I'll ask the clerk for a roll call, please.
Mayor Althan.
Present.
Vice Mayor Bronquino.
Right here.
Councilmember Danko.
Present.
Councilmember Finelli.
Present.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
All members are present.
Thank you, and I would ask each city council member to please adjust your microphones just to, for the courtesy of those that may be listening via virtual meeting this morning. And with that, let me just review our rules for public participation. Public participation shall be held in accordance with Section 286.0114 Florida statutes. And pursuant to the city council's meeting policies and procedures, one, each speaker shall at the podium provide their name and may speak for up to three minutes. Two, the public may provide comments to city council relative to matters not on the agenda at the times indicated in this agenda. Following any comments from the public, there may be discussion by the city council. Three, when addressing the city council on specific enumerated agenda items, speaker shall, A, direct all comments to the mayor; B, make their comments concise and to the point; C, not speak more than once on the same subject; and D, not by speech or otherwise delay or interrupt proceedings or the peace of the city council; E, obey the orders of the mayor or the city council; and F, not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments while addressing the city council, which pursuant to council rules shall be considered disorderly. Any person who becomes disorderly or who fails to confine his or her comments to the identified subject or business shall be cautioned by the mayor and thereafter must conclude his or her remarks on the subject within the remaining designated time limit. Any speaker failing to comply as cautioned shall be barred from making any additional comments during the meeting and may be removed as necessary for the remainder of the meeting. Thank you for your attention on the public participation rules for decorum. And next I move to agenda item, um, uh... No, D. So I will open up the meeting now for any members of the public who would like to address city council at this time. So who would like to go first?
Good morning, and welcome to the new member of the city council. I'm Dan Bryant. I live on Crossgate Court. And I'm just going to, this will be very brief, it's just on the Safety Committee for Cimarron, which I've spoken here before regarding our intention to make it a little bit more safe for pedestrians and cyclists and children along Cimarron. The, we had a very good discussion with Carl Cody about two weeks ago, kind of giving us an update on what was happening. And I'm very pleased that things are going along, it seems like things are going along well. And the feasibility study is, I suppose, right near completion by the England, Thames, and Miller Group. The latest statistics we have on the traffic on Cimarron is that the traffic has gone up a bit. We're now at 3,700 cars per day on that road, up from 3,200 just in November. So both of these were during the period of really high population density for the snowbirds to come down. And just about every lot is being built out on that peninsula on which Cimarron services. And so a good part of that traffic on that road is the very large trucks, dump trucks, heavy equipment, and an awful lot of tradesmen. They're actually the biggest concern that I have. We've, one of our members of the Safety Committee spoke with one of the young families here, and he's really at the point, he doesn't let his kids on bicycles anywhere near the road, which is a shame because of all it take, he's a good, you know, 300 yards from being connected to the rest of the 120 miles of bicycle trails that we have here in Palm Coast. And it's, he's really kind of frustrated with this. But I, we very much appreciate the works going on. We've, and we are looking forward to hearing the presentation, which I believe, if I'm right, somewhere near the end of this month or early in May, I have an update on all of these presentations. And just wanted to thank everyone for your time and committed your folks to moving this forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker, please.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. I had all intentions of making my comments this morning in reference to the discussion and the comments that were made last week about the city council and the mayor getting their raise. But I saw something this morning that has kind of stirred my feathers more, so I'm going to use my time this morning to use that. A year or so ago, we never had a security personnel outside. We never had a metal detector. And through my being a pain in the ass, we finally got the security and we got a metal detector. If my memory serves me correctly, which it probably doesn't, we were told the residents that the temporary security was only going to be for four months for $12,000. Well, we can still see temporary security outside. We got a metal detector. Well, the metal detector is supposed to be for everybody. It's not just supposed to be for the public. It's supposed to be for the city council, and it's mostly for city employees. Well, we kind of let that slide a little bit. Well, I saw something this morning that I can't let slide because I'm a retired firefighter. That door over there, it says, "Emergency exit only." Door must remain closed at all times. I saw that door open and close this morning multiple times. I don't see an emergency in this room. So I questioned how come people are allowed to go through that door? Well, it's an exit door. I understand that. It says exit on the top. But it also says, "Emergency exit only." Again, there's no emergency in this room this morning. Door must remain closed at all times. Well, if somebody goes out or somebody comes in, that door wasn't remained closed. So I want somebody to tell me how and why that door is used. And also, we had a city employee this morning who didn't go through the metal detector. And I questioned outside, and they said, "Oh, because they work here." Okay, let's track back of how many mass shootings you've ever had all over the country. Most of them are done by employees or former employees.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker next? Seeing no one approach, I would ask a city manager to make all of city council aware of the procedures and policy regarding security and this room. I know I'm not as familiar with them as I would like to be. So if you would just get that to all city council, I think that'd be helpful.
Actually, I just have to say something to my friend, Bob McDonald. Usually, it's not, this is not the only building that I have a word that asks security. If you have a card, a FOB card, to enter any door makes absolute no sense because they could go through any other door that's open that doesn't have security. So if anybody really spent out of shape to arm us over here, then they could just go through one, two, three, at least four doors that I know. Use the card and come in. Unless we're going to put security in every door, that's not feasible, my friend. That's the reason why, if you have a card, you show your card. You don't have to go through, because there's at least four other doors, if I'm not mistaken, at least four other doors that they could come in. Either we put security in all those doors, or it makes no sense. That's my only opinion on that.
So let's get the actual written policy and procedure, and then we can discuss it and see if we have to fine tune it. And thank you for your comments. Okay, that will go to our first presentation. And I'm sorry, just bear with me for a moment, please. So before we begin this section of the agenda, I want to take a moment to explain city council's objective for having workshops every month. The council meets in workshops to be well informed of each item to be brought before the city council and to make the best determination on behalf of all residents. City staff presents detailed information during the workshops and provides a summary background for each item, as well as any additional documents relative to the item. The city council can then have a meaningful, collaborative, healthy discussion on each item presented. This way, facts and knowledge can be obtained prior to the next business meeting, where the city council then makes the best determination in the interest of the citizens' health, safety, and welfare on each item. As we continue to grow as a collaborative council and follow all council meetings, policies, and procedures, I will always do my best to make sure that every city council member has an opportunity to bring forth individual opinions. Our constituents are expecting council to communicate cohesively and with civility to serve our community. The workshops are a valuable tool to present and discuss our individual opinions on behalf of all residents and achieve these objectives. We may not agree with each other, but that is one advantage of the workshops, to evaluate all the information necessary in advance of a decision, a motion, and a vote at our next business meeting. I hope that we will all understand the purpose of these workshops, and I invite all opinions at all times on the dais. Thank you for your patience with that. So if you would please begin the presentation of our annual Investment PFM Asset Management Report.
Yes, hi, good morning, Mayor, City Council. Today we have with us Scott Sticher with PFM. They are the city's investment advisors, and they are presenting, just as the mayor outlined, the annual investment report through December 31st.
Thank you. Just a little fair warning, I have a teammate that was supposed to join me. They got caught in a little bit of traffic. If you see a gentleman walk up and stand beside me, that's a teammate of mine, so I don't want you to be alarmed. Secondly, I want to thank...
We're hoping that traffic was well outside the city limits of Palm Coast, where they're doing all of that.
It was, it was. It was well down 95. It was not in Palm Coast. Yes, that's a fair statement. Quickly, too, I want to thank Helena and her staff, Ginger Nordberg, Shannon Boone. I just want you to know that these ladies are on their game. They're proactive. The lines of communication are always open with us. Makes our jobs much easier. Just know that you all are in good hands with the staff that you have in place here at the city. Very fortunate. I want to quickly give a little background on what drives what we do, PFM Asset Management does, on behalf of the city, okay? And really, at the end of the day, it's your investment policy that drives what we do on your behalf. So what drives the investment policy? Well, there's a number of things, as you can see here on the slide. Florida state statute, first and foremost. And then you have another, a couple of entities called the Association of Public Treasures of the United States and Canada, as well as the Government Finance Officers Association. All these combined create best practices, items that should go into a well-written investment policy, which the city does have. Additionally, I'll point you to the next page. And what that state statute, 218.415, says, the order of importance when investing the city's assets should be safety first, followed by liquidity, and then you are allowed to earn something on that particular money. But safety, liquidity, first and foremost, okay? And that, again, is what drives what we do on behalf of the city. And I want to be clear, because I feel like I've gotten this question in the past. To do that, to meet that goal, we are investing in high-quality fixed income securities. So there's no equities in this particular portfolio. And I know that is challenging sometimes when you see the market up 27% and we're only up a percent. Or in this case, this past year was not very friendly to high-quality fixed income. We actually had slightly negative numbers. So we get questions on why aren't you utilizing equities? Well, fast forward to today, when the equity markets are down over 5%, fixed income market's still not doing well, but not down nearly as much as equities. So we take this approach to smooth out those returns. We don't like equity-like returns in the city's portfolio, okay? Some background on what went on during the fourth quarter of 2021 and for the full year. And I'll be honest with you, this information is very dated already. So where I can, I'll try and update you. But it's hard to believe, but even during the fourth quarter, we did have a surge in COVID. The Omicron variant did rear its ugly head. It threatened growth here in the United States, but more so abroad. So it threatened slowing growth here at home. We also saw a falling unemployment rate. At the end of the fourth quarter, unemployment stood at about 3.8%. It's about 3.6% today. We've actually entered a period where there are actually more jobs available than there are unemployed. So if you could actually match the skill set with the jobs that are available, we'd actually have very unemployment, but we know that's not realistic. Additionally, we had stickier-than-expected inflation. You'd heard the Fed talk about inflation being transitory. They changed that rhetoric a little bit during the fourth quarter and realized that inflation was here to stay a little bit longer than they anticipated. And it's running a lot hotter than they anticipated. We're kind of hovering around 40-year highs when it comes to inflation. We did see a pivot by the Fed as a result of this. You know, their first mandate is full employment. They've reached that, right? The unemployment rate at 3.6%. Now, the other mandate the Fed has is keeping prices in check, keeping inflation in check. And that's, they've begun to fight inflation. So again, they pivoted a little bit by removing their asset purchases during the quarter and actually, most recently, actually increasing the Fed funds rate by 25 basis points. At the time of the printing of this material, the idea was three rate hikes in 2022. They're now talking about eight rates in 2022. They're even talking about 50 basis point increase, 0.50% at the next Fed meeting. So the Fed is now in full action to fight inflation. This is a snapshot of the FOMC dot plot. And again, the takeaway here was, at the time, three rate hikes in 2022. That is going to be shifted much higher after the next Fed meeting. Again, the idea being potentially seven or eight hikes in 2022. Here's a snapshot of the Treasury curve, and maturities from three months out to 30-year. Again, very dated. But the takeaway here is that interest rates did rise during the quarter. They continue to rise in the part of the curve that most impacts our client base, so five years and in. And what that means is interest rates, when they rise, bond prices fall. And that's what, that little chart to the right is showing you the Treasuries had negative returns during the course of the fourth quarter and 2021. Fast forward to today, and that yield curve looks even more different. If you looked at the three-month today, that curve would be at about 0.68%. The two-year would be at 2.57%. So it's risen another 1.78% since this printing. And then the five-year is at a 2.82, up another 1.49% again since this printing. So it's what's called a bear flattening. When that short end comes up, interest rates rise up, bond prices fall, and the shape of that curve is called a bear flattening. So it's, that's the negative. Bond prices go up, I'm sorry, interest rates go up, bond prices go down. That's the negative. The positive is that we're going to be investing new money, or as maturities occur, we're going to be investing those proceeds in higher-yielding securities, okay? So what that means is you should start to see a gradual increase in the income that comes back to the city in the form of its investments, all right? Looking at the next slide, again, not a pretty picture. I mentioned interest rates rising, bond prices falling. There was nowhere to hide during the course of the fourth quarter, and for the year, for that matter. Diversification did not help. All sectors were negative for the quarter and for the full year. So let me give you a piece of good news. I mentioned that when you have maturities or income coming in, that's going to be reinvested at higher yields. Looking at that maturity distribution on page eight along the bottom, the takeaway there is about, I'll call it 30% of your portfolio is inside of a year before it will mature. So again, as those maturities occur, we're going to be putting that money to work at higher yields. You have another 30% in that one-to-two-year space. So over half the portfolio coming due within the next two years, that can be put back to work earning additional yield. You see, we manage about $84,473, and I mentioned earlier the diversification didn't work, but you can see in the upper right-hand corner there, you do have a very diversified portfolio. It has served you well over the long term, and we'll see that when we look at performance here in a second. We give you a breakdown on the two portfolios that we're responsible for. How did we get to that $84,473? Well, the majority of that is in a longer-term portfolio. That's the portfolio on the top, $63,199. And then the bottom portion is a short-term fund, where we interact with the staff to help lead us to creating this portfolio. So basically, they tell us what the city's liquidity needs are. They say we can invest X amount in this fund, and then we go out and purchase securities on behalf of the city. So let me speak to page 10. Page 10 and 11 being the more important slides in the book, because again, this is where the majority of the city's assets are. So again, a snapshot of the longer-term portfolio, the $63,597,000 that I referred to earlier. Again, heavily diversified. In the upper right-hand corner, you can see the sector breakdown there. High quality, I mentioned earlier. You see the portfolio credit quality is double A, and we give you that credit quality breakdown in the pie chart to the lower left. And then duration, kind of a tricky concept, but it basically speaks to the interest rate sensitivity of your portfolio, okay? Right now, we're comfortable keeping that interest rate sensitivity of your portfolio in line with your benchmark. We think that's the appropriate thing to do right now. So let's speak to page 11. And it's never fun to present a negative return, especially for the most recent quarter and fourth quarter and for the trailing 12 months 2021. But I also want to focus a little bit more on the long term. But first, the short term. It was a tough quarter, it was a tough year for fixed income investors. The portfolio was down a negative 0.53% during the fourth quarter. Net of fee return was a negative 0.54%. So it was right on top of the benchmark. It's in gray, that gray bar area down below, negative 0.53. So again, focusing on the blue line for the trailing 12 months, the portfolio was down a negative 0.41%. Benchmark, negative 0.55%. And that net of fee return, a negative 0.49%. So we outperformed by a little over six basis points for the trailing 12 months. Again, I hate to focus on negative returns. I hate to focus on the short term. I think we're entering a period that's going to look more like the trailing three years and the since-inception returns because that greater income acts as an insurance policy against falling bond prices. So that increased income is going, should lead to higher returns and a little less volatility in your portfolio. So we're rapidly approaching a five-year track record. The inception of the portfolio was September 30th of 2017. And again, I feel like we should be entering a phase where you'll start to see the reward of higher income. I'm going to briefly speak to page 12. That is just a snapshot of that short-term portfolio. Again, this is, carries a duration of half a year, so 180 days and in. Because of that, it has a slightly lower yield, about 0.26% in this case. You can see it's diversified amongst commercial paper and US Treasuries, but again, carries a very high credit quality. A1P1, as it's called, which is the highest rating for short-term paper. Let me, let me stop there. I've thrown a lot at you. See if there are any questions on either of the portfolios, and then I'll finish with just what I call a compliance summary.
So I just have to add that I like the way you're going when it comes to the order of our priorities, which is safety, then liquidity, and finally the yield. I think it's pretty safe. And the Feds actually said this inflation is not transitory.
Right.
And do you have an estimated time? Can you, I might ask you to get a crystal ball, but do you have any idea when these things actually could become not so transitory?
Yeah, that's a great question. I've read some folks think as early as like three months from now, or even into mid-year this year, some are even projecting out toward the latter part of this year.
Are you part of those some folks?
Pardon me?
Are you part of those some folks?
Well, we typically don't try and predict what the Fed's going to do. We typically don't try and predict which way interest rates or inflation are going. But I would say we fall in the camp that the latter part of this year could see inflation start to subside.
One very last question, I think, if you'd be using. You think that the Feds fight on inflation, what they're doing right now, is that enough to bring our economy, I mean, our economy, if I make back a little bit on that?
Yeah, yeah. Again, I think it depends on who you ask. Some think it might be a little too late. I think it's definitely needed. Along with raising interest rates, though, the Fed has also announced that they're going to let their balance sheet run off. I think those two things in tandem are going to take a big step towards fighting inflation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That was my question.
No, thank you for your question.
Question?
No, no questions. I just also agree with the investment strategy. I always say, you know, my personal investment strategy is safe money doesn't make money, but this is not the situation where we want to have any type of unsafe investments. So I have no problem with the returns. And I think exactly what you're saying with combating inflation at the Fed level should result in an increase in income from our monies being distributed the way they are. So thank you for the great explanation thus far.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Question, councilman?
I realize you don't have any crystal balls, none of us do. But my understanding is the reports this morning, inflation has jumped to 8.5% at the end of March. That's a little concerning. I hope your estimate of later this year comes true, but 8.5% and the problems we still have and the issues that are being caused by the war in Ukraine, I'm just not as optimistic.
Right.
But I don't know what else we can do. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, councilman.
So what I'm hearing you say is, on the returns that we're getting back, those are being reinvested into higher-yielding securities? That's correct. Okay. That's correct. So I'll say the first quarter was a quiet month or quarter for us as far as reinvestments are concerned. But if you were to look at some of the activity during the quarter, if I can pull up, and if my iPad will cooperate with me. We purchased four different Treasuries during the course of the first quarter. And just to put it into perspective, the yields on those particular securities ranged from, of course, it's the last page that I need. They range from a 1.39%, a 1.75%, 1.8%, and one security at 2.63%. So that's proof that there are higher-yielding securities out there. And again, as that money comes due, those are the types of things we're going to be able to find on your behalf. Yeah.
And, go ahead.
And the other question I had is, I know the Feds are expecting maybe possibly eight rate hikes over 2022. How do we feel that that may affect our security? How do we feel that that may affect our, our security investments?
It's a great, great question. Because to your point, as, as rates go up, bond prices go down. But what we've seen is interest rates have already risen dramatically. So I think the market has sort of priced in any activity or actions that the Fed is going to take from an, an interest rate standpoint. So I think you're going to have less pain from rising rate, rate, a rising rate environment from the Fed's actions going forward because the market, to me, feels like it's already priced a lot of that move in by the Fed. Does that make sense?
It does.
Yes. So I think my answer is it shouldn't hurt as much going forward, the Fed's actions, what, what the Fed does shouldn't hurt as much going forward.
Thank you.
Two point, two questions.
Sure.
You made a point during your presentation that we are following a lower risk strategy. And I think that the order has been well received by city council. Have you or will you make a recommendation to go to a lesser risk tolerance mode?
We, 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 we won't. Mainly because with the help of the staff, we work with them to determine how much money really needs to be maintained liquid, so available for immediate need. And then what additional money you could take out, invest longer term to earn some additional yield, which again, the statute allows you to do. So we feel like we have, again, working with Helena and team, the right mix of that liquidity and long term money. And then within that long term money, yes, we'll be a little more defensive. So I mentioned the last four purchases were treasuries. So we are what we call relative value managers. We look for opportunities amongst the sectors that your policy allows. And if something is perceived to be a little more risky than another sector, we're not going to go into that riskier sector. We're going to be more conservative and best in what would, again, the perception of higher quality or.
Okay. And I'm just reinforcing, reinforcing your introduction so that our residents understand they may have their own individual investments out there, which may far exceed some of our performance or expectations, but there's a reason behind it, which has to do with this, you know, tolerance for risk, which the municipality, you know, does not, you know, work towards.
Yes.
And that leads me to my final question. You mentioned stocks.
Yeah.
And you mentioned bonds, you know, in my economic theory experience, there is a value in between the two, which could be in the form of a real estate investment trust, REITs and what have you. You didn't mention REITs of any kind as a floater in between the, the high and the low of the stocks and the bonds. Is there any reason for that?
Well, REITs tend to be more equity like, and that's not to say that we don't value them in other parts of our company, more pension type related investments. Where I will point you, I think it kind of gets you in that general direction is I'm looking on page thirteen, which is a, again, I prefer to it as a compliance slide or a sector allocation slide. The gray represents what your policy allows, the blue represents where you're actually invested. And so in, in lieu of REITs, we will utilize mortgage backed securities sometimes.
Okay.
So you'll see agency MBS pass throughs on this list. You'll see agency CMOs, you'll see agency CMBS. Those are mortgage backed. I'll call them REIT like, someone may cringe at that, but it's REIT like, real estate like. And right now, we don't favor that sector as much as say corporates and asset backs, mainly because of the Fed's activity, more recently buying mortgage backed securities and now indicating that they, well, they no longer will be buying mortgage backs and likely letting them mature and not reinvest them. So I think mortgage backs are going to be a little bit challenged in this environment. And so again, that, that's kind of our take on how we access or, or invest in real estate in your particular portfolio.
Okay. And, and, and real estate type or REIT type things, but my question really was about sanding the, the rough edges off of the volatility, the highs and the lows to keep us, you know, on track in the middle.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's exactly right.
Please continue.
I really, that was a great lead in to the compliance summary. I just wanted you to see that you're in compliance as far as a sector allocation is concerned. We give you a breakdown of the individual issuers and the allocation to those individual issuers as well as the, the credit ratings by both S and P, Moody's and Fitch. Again, no compliance issues here. And then we finish with the last item, the max maturity by sector. Again, the gray bar represents the maximum maturity allowable by a particular sector and the blue represents your actual allocation or actual maturity by sector. And you can see no compliance issues there. Okay? I do have a, a last slide that, which I'm going to send an update to. I noted in prepping that it only captured one of your portfolios, so I want to send out, I'll send it to Helena to, to update this particular page. It doesn't reflect both portfolios, the earnings really are north of, well, almost two and a half million dollars and the weighted average cost, the yield at cost, that gold bar should reflect more of a point six, one percent. So I'll get an updated slide to you on this particular page. That's all I have as far as prepared remarks. I'm happy to answer.
Appreciate that. I thought that was a very complete presentation. And staff is, is comfortable with the breadth and depth of the presentation?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Are there any final questions or comments from city council?
Yes. I'm glad, actually, your relative value managers, I'm glad that, well, we all know that investments are a game. So I'm glad that you tend to play it conservatively and safely in the interest of our city. So once again, I thank you and if everything you explain to us is nothing, the truth, nothing but the truth, then I thank you very much for your service.
You're welcome.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, Helena, for the cooperation that you have with this.
Final comments?
Just one, since the inception, twenty seventeen, you said that we've, we've made or earned about two million dollars on our investments.
So that, that chart was actually the most recent two years. So that's just in the past two years.
Excellent.
Yeah.
I think it was three point seven, three seven from the inception.
Three point seven.
Three point seven.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the presentation.
My pleasure.
We look forward to an even better report next time you appear.
Yes, I do as well. Thank you. Thank you.
The next presentation will be an update to the splash pad at Holland Park and our assistant city manager, Lauren Johnston, will deliver the presentation, please.
Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning, mayor and city council. Lauren Johnston, assistant city manager and Mr. Trevor Arnold with Gray Robinson. We're here to provide city council with an update on potential paths for repairing the splash pad at Holland Park. So I'm going to go through a little bit of a timeline on what's transpired. And these are some existing photos of how the splash pad sits right now with delamination of the surface material. During the initial opening of the splash pad in May of two thousand and twenty-one, the city and BBI construction noticed there were several areas of concern in water quality and surface color fading. There were several meetings and discussions between the design team, S and ME, the contractor, BBI, and the subcontractor, No Fault, and the city on how to move forward. Throughout these meetings, the subcontractor, No Fault, communicated with the team that these concerns were part of a break in process and it is an aesthetic issue only. These concerns would resolve with more usage on the splash pad. S and ME suggested using a different product in the future. The contractor, BBI, conducted water quality testing through the health department, which passed successfully. Also, all fall protection testing passed inspection throughout a certified playground inspector. At this time, all parties felt that the splash pad was safe for reopening, for an opening in May of two thousand and twenty-one. In July of two thousand and twenty-one, the city and BBI noticed the surface material starting to fail on both the surface and pieces of the rubber buffings were found in the drainage system. From July until October, when the splash pad closed for the season, the city was working closely with the contractor and subcontractor to try and determine a repair and replacement plan, but needed input from the designer on recommended changes in order for these concerns not to occur again. During this time, the contractors began experiencing supply chain issues related to materials needed to repair the splash pad. While the splash pad was closed, repairs were made to some of the structures. These repairs included fixings to any internal tubing, that's how the water is being splashed, and then also sprinkler fixtures on or inside the structures as well as repainting to keep the structures needed to keep them like looking new. No repairs were made to the surface material. In December, two thousand and twenty-one, results from samples submitted of the delaminated rubber were returned stating that the product had a strong, unrecognizable chemical smell and a premature aging was noted in the samples. The subcontractor at the time conducted that they provided exactly the materials specified and installed the product according to the manufacturer's instructions. Again, the contractor explained that there were significant material shortages and supply chain delays. City staff consulted with our legal team and they recommended that the city seek outside legal counsel since this wasn't in our retainer and their team does not handle construction legal cases. We utilized our procurement process to seek legal counsel and selected Mr. Arnold with Gray Robinson. In consulting with Mr. Arnold, the city made a final effort on March twenty-fifth to communicate with the design team, S and ME, the contractor, BBI, and the subcontractor, No Fault, to discuss the failure and contribution from each party to remedy the splash pad. S and ME was asked to provide an official written system recommendation for alternate surfacing because city staff knew the importance of reopening the splash pad as soon as possible. We also discussed that the city was prepared to take legal action in, if an amicable resolution could not be made. BBI, the contractor, is very eager to assist and has researched alternate surfacing with quotes and timeline, but we have not received an official recommendation from the design team on a path to move forward. And at this time, I'm going to pass to Mr. Arnold to discuss those potential paths.
Good morning.
Morning.
My job's made easy because Ms. Johnston really went through a lot of the background. As, as mentioned, we've, we've got a unacceptable failure, there's no question over that. There's been analysis, there's been a lot of discussion with the original design and construction team. There was an effort to try to bring them together to see if it could be resolved short of escalation. While there was some interest amongst the players, we could not get unified interest. And even with BBI expressing some appetite and interest in participation, they have caveated all their communications with the fact that they will not take design responsibility. So they need someone else, either the original designer or another design firm to direct the repair method and approach. So even with some partial interest and, and opportunity with BBI, we're at a position without the designer of record being willing to participate in a repair process, we need to bring in a independent designer to help direct the means and methods of performing the repair. As far as options, you know, one, option one, which was the most ideal, is a full amicable resolution before escalation. That was the goal, that's the reason why the decision was made to meet with the original project participants without lawyers, you know, on March twenty-fifth and see if there could be traction in trying to resolve things before sending out formal legal communications and, and going down a claim process. Given BBI's caveat about not taking on design responsibility, since their initial role was a construction manager and did not include design responsibility, even though they had some pre-construction services with Design Assist. And SNME, who have not been responsive since the meeting, have not expressed an, an interest or an ability to participate, given the cost. The costs are potentially six hundred thousand dollars has been estimated at this point for, you know, redoing, giving the binding failure to redo the work. Now, that is what was presented by BBI based upon their approach. And BBI had not committed to what financial participation they would be willing to do, but I think they communicated that there would need to be some joint participation by SME and by BBI. So unfortunately, I don't believe option one is a viable option at this point, given the, the progress to date. Option two would be a partial resolution where we try to proceed with an amicable resolution with parties that are already willing and able. So that would include BBI and potentially No Fault. My concern there is we're still early in the process. We have gone through the documents, reviewed the documents, brought in an outside consultant, an architect and a contractor to provide some input regarding the mode of failure and the responsibility of the parties. This does, I think it's possible, if not probable, that it's going to be a contribution of causes between the design and the construction side. So there's some risk in doing a full resolution with one party before discovery and before we've confirmed the party's positions because then we would be at risk as to what we could ultimately recover against the other party. So option three would be proceeding with an escalation of the claim process. We have already drafted proposed letters. In fact, at the March twenty-fifth meeting, those were hand delivered to the project participants. Those letters include compliance with Florida's chapter five fifty-eight, which is a pre-suit construction defect statute where you have to provide notice and an opportunity to inspect and attempt to resolve things before you file a lawsuit. So we prepared some letters adhering to chapter five fifty-eight and some other standard operating procedures, including preservation of documents, requesting insurance. There's different contract versions amongst the parties. The construction management agreement with BBI has a standard AIA document with some modifications and that includes a pre-suit mediation requirement. The SNME document is not an AIA, does not include the pre-suit mediation requirement. But my suggestion is a couple concurrent paths. Number one, we proceed to send out the formal letters and that outlines a process over the next forty-five days where they can come and inspect and engage consultants and engage lawyers so we can see if we can get more traction to resolve things pre-suit. We also, given the requirement to mediate prior to litigation, we present some mediation options and offer to mediate in the next approximately forty-five to sixty days. And so if, if we can make further progress on resolution through mediation or in advance of a mediation, then that would forego the need to proceed with a lawsuit. But short of that, I think we would need to proceed with a lawsuit. As far as the letters and the recipients of the letters, we've included BBI, the pertinent subcontractor involved in the, the product that failed, which is No Fault, SNME, which was the designer of record for this component of the work, and the performance bond surety, the performance bond surety for BBI. I think concurrent with that path regarding going against the involved parties and trying, trying to bring them to the table so we can get this unfortunate problem resolved, I think we should proceed with identifying a third party design firm that can give us a recommendation on how to fix this. And whether, we'll either utilize someone with a task order or go through the CCNA process, but I think concurrently, we should move forward with determining how we can fix this. And hopefully by that point in time, we'll have some participation by the original design and construction team on the financial responsibility, but otherwise, we, the city could consider whether it will move forward with the repairs prior to a resolution with the involved parties. I know time is of the essence with respect to the park and the season. and construction team on the financial responsibility, but otherwise, the city could consider whether it will move forward with the repairs prior to a resolution with the involved parties. I know time is of the essence with respect to the park and the season. We don't know at this point how long that process will take. The availability of materials depends upon which product is selected, some of which require a variance. So even on the early side, if things went very quickly, we'd probably be looking at mid-July to mid-August, unfortunately, but I think it, I think we need to get someone to make sure that we fix it right. And right now, we only have someone saying, this may work, but someone else needs to take responsibility for the approach. So we need to bring someone in that confirms it will be fixed right, so we're not facing this problem again. So I think those are the two concurrent paths, that we need to proceed escalation with the formal claim process and verifying through an independent engineer how this can and should be fixed.
So a question. Your recommendation is to bring in a, I'm not sure what the right term is, an expert. Why would this expert be willing to take on the responsibility for the result when we've got finger pointing between the prior expert and the construction company? I mean, is there such an expert out there willing to accept the responsibilities and potential liabilities for another failure?
I think that there may be some trepidation by folks, and I think that is something that's, you know, a situation here, but we, my expectation is there's someone with expertise over these particular types of products, how this can and should be done right, and as long as they provide clear criteria and then someone else has to execute the work, they will probably want to have some reasonable and sufficient construction phase services so that they have some degree of comfort and control over the execution of the work because of concerns over this getting done right. So I imagine they may want a little more than typical construction administration or contract administration services during the execution of the work, but I do think there would be viable firms that have the expertise that would want to come in and help the city fix this problem.
Okay, and I just want to ask counsel, I guess, and I'm not sure where to go with If the city were to choose a different direction in terms of the, not the repair, but the development of the facility, because you made a point that what's at stake here is our residents and families and kids have no use of this facility while all of this is going on. That's a big problem for me, huge. Can the city proceed in a different direction in terms of what that park might look like while all this is going on without costing, without losing any traction or leverage in our legal proceedings? Am I clear enough in the question?
Well, I guess I'd want to understand a little more what you mean by going in.
If I remake the park, if I build a different park that we know will serve the public and not require the attention and the potential future problems that this one has and will have in the future, does that reduce the leverage we have in our legal standing going forward?
I don't think it eliminates a claim. I think it has a potential impact on the claim and may create some questions over whether this was a viable, you know, design concept in the first place and may increase the amount of finger pointing that occurs amongst the players, but I don't think that presents any legal argument that we wouldn't have a valid claim and valid damages just because we had to go a different direction, given, you know, this failure.
So it sounds to me like you're, are you the rock or the hard place that you're putting us in between here?
I mean, I think we're in the best situation if we fix it right based upon what we originally bargained for and expected. This is what we wanted, this is what we expected, we didn't get it. We now have, in addition to, you know, a lot of disappointed people, we have lost revenues that are part of the claim as well. I know that's not a major piece of this, but there are lost revenues that have been calculated. It would include, there's indemnification responsibility that gives us a basis to recover attorney's fees and expert fees as well as the repair costs, so we would be seeking all of those things. If we move forward with the repair process, that also liquidates the amount in dispute and helps avoid or minimize the possibility that the other side will say, you're estimating 600, we think we could do it for 200,000. You know, it liquidates those amounts, we provide them notice and opportunity that we're doing the work, and it gives us a more concrete basis to move forward and recover that amount.
Ms. Johnston, a question for you. Is city staff aware of another park, not necessarily identical or not necessarily the same size, that has operated for an extended period of time without incident?
Yes, sir.
We do have that, a file on that, okay?
Yes.
I guess with that, I would ask city council, please, questions?
I basically, I have to say that the city did everything right since the inception of this project. City did nothing wrong, as far as I'm concerned. Staff was phenomenal throughout the whole thing. I just have a couple of questions. The shortage of the materials, is it still in effect, or we, the shortage is no longer there, that we could actually get the materials for this, probably some kind of a rubber that we need, are they immediately available?
I think they are available. I think there's different lead times depending upon the material utilized, and so there's a couple factors on the timing. One is the lead time and the availability of the materials, and of course, with materials in the industry, that's a factor on a lot of things. And then also whether something has been approved or whether it needs to get approved through a variance with the Department of Health. But we, so I think that is one factor in the selection. If we, if ultimately someone says there are multiple options that will be viable and that they would stand behind to make sure it's fixed right, then I'm sure that's something we would consider is the timing of what can occur, you know, the quickest. But right now, I think we need someone to bless one or multiple options, so then we are comfortable choosing between those. But I know that the availability of materials and the timeline and the lead time for those materials is something that has been considered, you know, to date, including by city staff.
So if I could just add, just add to your question, just, I'm sorry, when you say bless, does that mean like bless and bond, the two Bs?
Well, not, I don't think the designer-
Blessings are nice, bonding is better.
Well, I think they would, they would be responsible as the designer of record. It wouldn't technically be bonded in the sense of a surety bond-
Right.
-but I think they would stand behind and be responsible for that design approach.
Do you have an estimate time in order to get something that's good for us? And that's the reason why I'm actually asking this question.
Vice Mayor, we would have to follow the city's procurement process to find a third-party designer, a new designer. But what the quotes that we received from the contractor said, there's this material that could take lead time of six to eight weeks as an alternate, and then there's this material that could take eight to 10 weeks. This material has to have a variance from the Department of Health, they have to follow the state bathing code, but this one has a pre-approval, so this one's a little bit easier and a shorter timeline. But then we have to follow the city's procurement to find a new designer to bless this, to certify and give official recommendation.
To be honest, my biggest fear here is that we're going to get hot days, not to mention any months, and we're going to have the most pressures out there without having a place to go, when I was so proud, and I'm still so proud, of when I went there and I saw all those kids, nothing melts you. If that doesn't make us want to work, then I don't know what, but anyway, having that in mind, having that said, the builder and designer, basically, they want nothing to do with us at this point. They really not showing any interest. Somebody is going to have to be responsible for this. Somebody's going to be. And if we allow the city to be responsible for something that we don't, that we didn't do, shame on us. To be honest, and upon looking at what's going on over here, I think that what's going on, either I'm completely wrong or in order, in the interest of the kids, we probably have to pay the $600 and then sue the heck out of these people that don't give a darn about our kids and get that money back and do what we have to do. I think that's probably the only way we're going to do it, because they already showed that they don't really, they're coming up with excuses, pushing it down the road. That's what they're doing, and we cannot allow that. At least I won't stand for it. I'd rather go into that general fund and use a little money, because this is, in my opinion, an emergency, because those kids deserve to be considered, their well-being considered an emergency. I think that that's probably one way to go. It's pay what we have to pay, and I tell, we on the right, there's no way, unless all hell breaks loose, there's no way that we're going to have to pay for that. Somebody's going to pay for that, and that's why we have law firms that get involved with these things. It's a shame that this kid's going to be out there without this park, which in my opinion is, you know, much needed. Thank you.
Counselor?
Just a question, a concern. I'm concerned that we may never get this thing fixed right. And looking at it that way, I just want to understand, and I want to make sure I understood what you said, if we were to replace that facility with another type of facility in that space, in other words, take this thing out, it wouldn't in any way impair our ability to go after them for these damages? Is that correct? We don't have to have this thing sitting there if we decide to go a different direction?
I think it would potentially have an impact. I'm not saying it would eliminate the opportunity to go against them. I think if we got an opinion from an outside engineer that this simply cannot be fixed appropriately, that would be different.
Okay.
I don't think we have that yet. So I think we, there is an expectation, and I'm hearing that this can and should be fixed appropriately. So if we went another direction, then I think it may be more of a challenge if we didn't get that opinion. If that engineer says, we cannot agree that this will be fixed appropriately, then of course, we're not going to spend $600,000 and go through this again and we'll go a different direction. And they should have told us this before $6 million in contracts were signed, but I wouldn't want to prematurely pivot without some understanding that it could impact the claim. And just one other comment, I would say, there's different ways to do the binders, and one of the things that has been identified is there's different methods to do the binding. The inferior approach was selected here, and there's a question over whether that was lack of direction from the design team or decision by the contractor, and that's why there's different scenarios. But, so I think there are methods that this could be done properly and should have been done properly initially. There's other similar parks, and we think we know why it failed, so this isn't some mystery that it'll never be fixed right. I think there just needs to be more attention, there needs to be proper, you know, direction and proper execution.
Again, my concern is, will this thing ever be fixed right? And I'd hate to see us go down that path two, three years-
That's the reference to rock and a hard place, where we're both, where we're all sitting right now.
And I was just, I was just curious, Lauren, Lauren, is there some other type of facility we could put in there that would accomplish the same thing, which is basically giving children a place to play and enjoy themselves in the summer?
You mean expanding the, removing the splash pad and expanding the playground?
Removing the splash pad and putting something else in there that might accomplish the same thing, whether, I don't know, a fountain, something with water, or maybe something overhead with, you know, the misty stuff-
Counselor, if I could make a, if I could make a suggestion based on what I'm hearing from the attorney and then, you know, comment back, certainly would be appropriate for us to direct staff to prepare some alternatives to a water-based park. Presentations. I do understand, I think what I'm hearing clearly from counsel is that if we were to change things out before all of this legal activity takes place, the other side is going to say, we've admitted a failure in the design, and therefore, they're going to have a stronger case than they would have had. I mean, that's, I'm making it very simple, and I'm a layman, certainly not an attorney, but we're stuck, but we're not stuck from seeking an alternative which might not include the part of the park which is the corrosive effect of the water and the equipment that's involved. Don't know the answer. I think that would be a staff assignment to bring back alternatives that the community would favor, because at the end of the day, it's what's going to be best for the residents and the families and the kids. And I don't know what that is yet. I assume there are many, many, many different examples around the world that we could kind of look at and find out what might be a potential alternative while your cycle is going on, because I know you can't define an end game. You had mentioned 30 days, 60 days, perhaps 90 days, and my experience has been that those things can tend to trail on even longer. Does that get us there?
I absolutely agree, and that's where I was headed, and it would be nice to see some, you know, options and some rough cost estimates if we went that direction. I was, I just want to make sure I want to understand one thing, because I was not on council when this was approved. Did this end up costing us roughly $6 million?
The entire Phase Two, yes, but there were other elements in Phase Two. The bocce ball courts were added, we did some other expandishers, but yes, Phase Two costs $6 million, yes.
I see, okay. Thank you very much.
Counselor, any questions?
So I have a few. First of all, I think your term, you were spot on when you said unacceptable failure. This thing's brand new, it hadn't even been operating for a year yet. I do have a unique perspective on this because I spent many days at that splash pad last summer with my family, with my children, and we drive by it every day, and every day they look at it and go, oh, it's still not open. And I'm sure that my family's not the only family that's driving by and seeing that. I think we need to seek a resolution quick. I don't think it should cost the taxpayers a dollar, we already paid for it. And I really feel like there should be some pressure placed on these companies to either work with us to get this resolved, or we need to look at the full scope of what we can do. Is there a way to calculate a loss of use by day because this amenity is not available to citizens? And can we use that, that loss of use to help expedite some of these processes with these companies? Also, if these companies are not willing to work with us and move forward, I hope that they know that in the future, they would have no chance of doing any business with the city of Palm Coast, and that if other cities asked us our experience with those companies, we'd be happy to share that as well. So I'm hoping that they are going to be willing to step forward and seek a reasonable resolution in a fair amount of time, but I am all for moving forward as quickly as possible to seek a resolution and to make sure that it does not cost the citizens of Palm Coast a dollar more than what we've paid for.
Counselor?
So I have a few questions. One, I think we alluded to the fact that we kind of understand what went wrong. Was it, it was the binder underneath, and then what happens, the delamination occurs because there's like a leak in the flooring and then it like spreads, is that, is that what's going on? Because then we talked about like a caustic smell and things like that, and it just seemed, sounded like it was potentially the binder that was the issue. Is that where we're leading to be, you know, think that this was actually awry?
I think there's, I don't want to oversimplify it. I think there's other issues. We've identified a list of various, you know, deficiencies and including some, you know, mechanical items and some sizing items. I do think the binder is, has been identified as a key issue, a key contributing factor, and that includes what product was utilized and whether that was called out or who made that decision and whether that was coordinated. There was, you know, an RFI about it, but fairly late in the game. But, so I do think the binder is, will ultimately be determined as a key issue as far as what material was used, how that was utilized, and whether that was ultimately the mode of failure with the delamination where the materials were separating instead of being bonded and adhered as they were supposed to be.
And is the, one of their potential, you know, just playing devil's advocate, are they trying to say, and I just reading between the lines, that water was potentially coming up from underneath it, and is that what was separating it out, and that, is that why the plumbing and everything was kind of resolved? Is that, I'm just asking, like, what is their defense is say, hey, it wasn't the glue, it was a, obviously they're pointing at somebody else saying this is potentially why it bubbled up from underneath, and then that kind of had the repercussions of having the delamination occur?
Well, I think the finger pointing is going to be the contractor, construction manager here, and that is an important distinction because they did have more responsibility than just a contractor. But I think they will say they did the work in accordance with the plans and specifications, and this is a design issue. The designer will say, these are the specialists, and no fault is a specialist, and they were brought in to have this expertise and to know how to do, you know, the bonding and adhering process. So there's going to be, there already is some finger pointing and some blame shifting going on, and we'll have to get to the bottom of that. And ultimately, you know, there's probably going to be some shared responsibility, it's not going to be an all or nothing situation.
Got it. And what materials underneath the lamination?
I'm sorry, let me just clarify. When I say- When I say some shared responsibility, I mean between the design and construction.
Understood.
I have not seen or had anyone identify anything that is the responsibility of the city. But I'm saying I don't think it'll, we're not in a situation where it appears to be at this early stage 100% design or 100% construction. It does seem like there's some shared responsibility-
Except that Councilman Finelli makes a very good point, that the quality of life, which has a value every single day, is already expensed to the city.
And I, I just wish, to be honest with you, I could have a representative from the builder and a representative from the designer come in front of us without laughing, telling us, "Why the heck is the city's fault for the quality of their job?" I just wish they would come here one day and tell us.
Back to my question, though, what is underneath the actual substrate? Like, what, is it just concrete underneath?
No, it's rubber. Well, concrete, yes, but also under the creatures is a rubber buffing, and that adds an extra layer of fall protection. And that's what we were seeing as well as delaminating and into the filtration process.
Gotcha. And so that was also part of it. Did any of our filtration equipment suffer damage or anything like that?
Yes, we, we are looking at having to replace, as part of this whole process, everything would need to be reevaluated.
And what is the probability that you could just, we could just rip all of this out and just allow a surface that is more conducive to kids falling and scraping knees and things like that while this is going on?
So that's our hope is through a, you know, third-party engineer, the consultant who, who understands these water-based activities can, can give us and guide us in that, in that direction.
Yep. Because the, the surface is, is there to prevent abrasions and scrapes and kids falling. And I read, I remember reading the entire study about how the, you know, the whole industry shifted to these more, I don't know, whatever, like supple materials so that kids can fall and not, you know, scrape their knees and things. But if we have the option to just remove all of this and open it up, and it's kind of like at your own risk, I, I even feel that is a type of a solution that, at least in the meantime, allows this facility to be used. Because like everybody else here, there are so many kids that love this place. And I, I don't drive by it every day, but every time I go over to the basketball courts, I mean, it was packed all the way down. But if there's a way to, you know, just in the interim, at least have some part of this facility open, I think that's a win as well. But yeah, I fall in line with everyone else here, thinking that it's not the city's fault and nor is it the residents' fault, but it needs to be resolved as soon as possible. So is that an actual viable path forward, though, to, to remove this intermediary substance and just run with the concrete underneath?
Again, we would need a certified engineer to give us that recommendation, and then also, because they're also recommending the removal of the fall protection barrier and use at your own risk. And what does that look for long-term liability and claims to the city if someone falls off the turtle or something to that effect? There, there is signage now saying, "Play at your own risk." But again, you know, having more representation from our league, our insurance carrier, give us a, an official recommendation as well.
So I, I think I would ask, so that's a great question, and the emergency for a fallback to get us back in use may not reduce our leverage, because we gotta get to be. However, I'm not sure that anyone's prepared to answer that question at this moment, because there's our insurance concerns. So I guess what I would ask is that you follow up on the councilman's questions and get back to us on the earliest next agenda possible with enough information so that we can consider if that is in fact possible without losing any leverage in the legal, like, legal actions that, that you're describing to us. Does that, does that make sense? Does that give staff enough direction to move forward?
Yes, sir.
Does that work for everybody?
Yep, and thank you, everyone, our staff and councilmen.
We're carrying the most precious things that we have in Palm Coast. That's, that's why it's so important that I can emphasize enough. Kids should be the most important thing in our lives, in our lives, not just Palm Coast, in our lives.
Thank you for your presentation, we appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next item up on the agenda is a presentation about the Beltaire Park. With the accent that we all appreciate. You're welcome.
From New Jersey.
That's me.
What part of New Jersey?
Yeah, yeah, northeast, I think. James Hurst, Outdoor Recreation Manager for Parks and Recreation. Today with me, I have Sam Elsh, sorry, Sam, Elshake. He is a representative with an OLC Design Company, architect company that does kind of aquatic features and some other architecture buildings. And today, we're gonna talk about the facility assessment and recommendations for Beltaire Park. Couple of months ago, as part of our CIP process, staff goes around to each park and evaluates and assesses each facility, amenity, and playground equipment, things like that. And we noticed through this assessment that Beltaire Park was one of those parks that was a priority within our park and renewal CIP process. So what will happen, I'll go over a few things, a couple of slides with history and some background. There'll be some pictures of the park. Sam's gonna come up and talk about the current conditions of the park as he went through and did his assessment with us. And then at the end, we have some recommendations that we would like to get some direction from City Council. So bit of history, we, the swim pool and the buildings were constructed in 1985. So the pool's a little older than I am. The Beltaire Community Park was transferred to the city from the county back in 2001. The racquetball, handball courts were constructed prior to 2007, as well as the tennis courts, they were also constructed, we believe, but prior to 2007. The playground equipment that you see out there, it is, it was constructed in 2007, and then we had the shades added in 2018. And then in 2007, we saw the middle school expansion and some traffic rerouting as well. So this one here is the original concept of 2006. As you can see, I don't know if the mouse works, but we shared some parking with the school. Buddy Taylor there, we had the same access, so the access from Beltaire. You could get to the pool from Beltaire, and then the parking was independent from the bus route. Fast forward to 2007, the middle school went through an expansion. They added the building there in the middle, which kind of cut the access from Beltaire and really rerouted the traffic pattern up to Parkview Drive and then down as you, what it currently is. So right next to the fields coming into the parking lot there. This really eliminated direct access and connection from Beltaire Parkway for the park. Fast forward again to 2021, pretty much today. So as you can see, the pool has kind of limited exposure. You have to go through onto Parkview, from Beltaire onto Parkview, take the driveway all the way around to the pool and to the park. It has insufficient parking. The, we have access, as we, as I said earlier, access from the neighborhood, from Parkview Drive, and then we kind of see this park as serves as a neighborhood park more, not really as a community park. So I kind of mentioned earlier about some of the troubles with traffic and rerouting of traffic. So the next couple of slides will show you the bus route for Buddy Taylor, and then we'll do the pickup line for Wadsworth Elementary as well. Sorry, I thought the line would be a bit bigger on the screen, but I guess it didn't work out that well. So we have the Buddy Taylor bus route. So usually between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:30 AM, and then between 1:00 and 2:00 in the afternoon, the buses come in to pick up the kids from the middle school. So they come in, they come off Beltaire, onto Parkview, down the driveway, the entrance to the park, through the park, through the tennis courts and the pool parking lot, and then into, into like the, the racetrack here, the track. And then they kind of, they come in, they circle around, and then they exit the same way. So as you, you know, especially right now, the pool isn't really open, 7:00 AM to 7:30, but at 1:00 and, 1:00 to 2:00, it is open. So we do see a little bit of limited access for users that come into the park. So if you came in and you wanted a lunchtime swim, you're stuck for probably a good half an hour before you can get up, but just due to the bus traffic coming through. And then depending on pedestrian traffic, the buses can pretty much back up and have a traffic jam all the way through to our parking lot. Wadsworth pickup line for the, for the elementary school is between 8:30 and 9:00, and then between 3:30 in the afternoon and to 4:00 in the afternoon. Again, same kind of situation. Parents come off Beltaire, drop their children off at the, at the school, come through, and as they loop around the back of the facility, they, and then they come in through our parking lot again, and then up the driveway, and then to the exit, whichever way they exit. Again, creates congestion, a lot of congestion between those times. Usually at 8:30 to 9:00, we have programs starting, so something like our Aquazumba water aerobics, some swim lessons. You know, we see some people just, you know, not even bother coming in and using our programs due to the, to the extent of the congestion of the traffic. So, you know, if you ever come at that time, you know, you're waiting half an hour, 45 minutes, probably get out. If you wanna try and park within the parking lot there, it, you know, it's, it can get a little bit dangerous. Next slide we have here is utilization of, and what we have at the park. So we've got the Aquatic Center, which has programming. We have open swimming, we do birthdays, we have high school swim teams and some special events. We had a total attendance of just over 20,000 people come to the pool in 2021. We have some tennis courts, so we have three tennis courts, and they're also lined for pickleball. And they, they are open to the public. We do have some hours for pickleball to come and enjoy it, but right now, pickleball just goes every time, anytime they want, which is fine. It is open to the public. We have the racquetball towards the back of the park there. We have the racquetball and the handball courts. They're also open to the public. And then behind the racquetball court there, we have kind of just a little basketball hoop as well. We have the two fields that can hold up to the two full-size soccer fields. We have limited reservations just due to no field lights over there. You know, they, so in 2021, we had 22 field reservations, and then 20, 21, 22, 22 field reservations, and then in 2021, we had 16 field reservations. We have the playground, it's suitable for children of all ages. It's separated, so there's little, little infant kid kind of area, and then we have the big kid area. And then we have two pavilions, and then one gazebo as well that was rented. And then you just usually use for birthday parties or general use. And then, as I said before, Sam is gonna talk about the, go through each. Him and his team went through the pool, the courts, racquetball courts, the field, everything, and they kind of came up with a recommendation report for staff, and he's gonna kind of summarize that report for us right now.
So are we, just to clarify for, for me, are we talking about 20% of the per capita population using this facility in a fiscal year? Although, could be multiple visits for individuals, but based on 100,000 population, you're saying 20,000 people? There were 20,000 people visits during the fiscal year?
Yeah, and this, and it really did include October and November. Usually we were open, but due to COVID, we were closed. We do see a lot of returning customers, but we do have some, we have camps that come in and use the pool. Basic aquatic programming-
Where I'm trying to get to, I'll put you on the spot. Is there any way to guesstimate how many individual residents, regardless of age, are, are frequenting, using the pool?
There could be a way. We would have to delve into that and kind of do a bit of research on that, yeah.
Very good.
But we'll go through, and then Sam will talk about the current conditions.
Hi, my name is Sam Elshake. I'm, I was also a water architect. We teamed up with CES Pool Consultant. They do all the equipment, they just replaced the pool equipment. So teamed up with them to do a facility analysis. And the Beloterra Park has admin building. The proper, the purpose of an admin building is to house staff, has a storage. Usually there is a lifeguard when you come in and cool down during the day. You have to have your break, there is a break room, affairs aid corner, so if somebody experienced a medical issue, they can come in, cool down, wait for an ambulance to come. The current facility right now doesn't serve any of these functions. As you can see in the picture, it's showing a lot of signs of age. It's about 38 years old, haven't been getting some attention inside. We have a new roofing on it, so at some time, it was leaking, the roof was leaking, and it has a new roof light right now. It's insufficient to serve the purpose of an admin building. There is fire safety items that's missing. We need to upgrade the life safety in the building to keep it running. The check-in area doesn't have air conditioning. There is a portable unit that's sitting there that's not serving the staff very well. So in the summer of the heat. So as a suitability of the building is not suitable for the function, it's deficient as size, as condition, and we recommend that we need to remove that building, rebuild it if appropriate, and we don't see any value in keeping that building. Another part of that building, there is like three cuts. One is the admin building, the other one is the locker room. And the locker room is also deficient structurally. All the plumbing fixtures are deteriorating. There is no ADA showers, there is no accessible showers or toilet rooms. There is a lot of rusting beam support. So anything we do with that building, it's gonna take a lot of effort and money to aggregate the building from plumbing, structure, everything need to change. So our recommendation is, again, that building need to be replaced. There is no redeeming value in that building, and it, we need to start over. There is a third part that's a community center. Same condition happened, it's lacking the fire protection item. Egress is compromised, there is no ADA toilet associated with it. The condition is again 38 years old, it's not in a good shape. Any upgrade to it is gonna require upgrading the structure, so we don't see any value in keeping it. As far as the pool condition, it's about 38 years old as well. Pools usually last between 40 and 50 years as a structure. We can see a lot of cracking on the surface of the pool inside. It need to be resurfaced really soon. The coping around the pool show a lot of cracking as well. That's a start of the deterioration with age, so these coping need to change. The pool deck is a patchwork of several additions and, and expansion of the pool deck, so that's an issue. There is some hazards item that we pointed out on the pool deck that need to be fixed immediately. It's a safety hazard. The pool itself is configured in a very, like a half-round area with lap lanes. It's not deep enough for competitive swimming. It doesn't serve the function, it doesn't have any activity for kids, it doesn't have a zero-depth entry. All the modern stuff that you see in pools and aquatic centers, it lacks. So even if you upgrade the pool, you are gonna end up with a design that doesn't really serve the community. And usually, in a lap swimming, lap swimmer wanna one pool temperature. People doing the exercise want it a different pool temperature. Kids tend to want it, the water a little bit warmer than lap swimmer. So combining lap swimming and kids and senior people exercising is not a conducive, good design. So there is some value in the pool that if you maintain it and spend money on it, it could act as a learn-to-swim pool, some group exercise, but it's not really a competitive swimming pool venue or kids-friendly venue. The pool equipment, they just recently been replaced, so they are in a good condition. It can serve for another five to seven years lifespan, as long as the pool stay the same size and cheap. So the pool equipment is in good shape. One big issue with the pool equipment, they are, the backwash every, twice a week, you have to backwash the pool filters. And all that water coming in the backwash, it's not going anywhere. It's dumped on the ground, getting all the way to the playground's area and flooding that area. So the, for two, one to two days a week, the playground is flooded and you're not usable because of backwashing the, the pool. So if we are gonna maintain the pool, we need to connect that- So if we are gonna maintain the pool, we need to connect that backwash to a sewer system to connect it back. The playground, the playground is in good shape, except the flooding, and you can see a picture of the flooded playground. That's what happen every time they backwash the the pool equipment. It's it's can function for years and years. The problem with it, it's too far away from toilet area, too far away from the parking area. So we need to reorganize that park in a way that this playground becomes the center of the park and have a better access to it. Next, tennis court. The tennis court condition is totally deteriorated. The subsurface, the surface is deteriorated, all the nets, all the fencing, everything about it is rebuilt. There is no value whatsoever to maintain it. The next one is the racquetball court, and there is two of them, and as you can see, the structure showing cracking, same mu showing cracking, so there is a structural deficiency. Racquetball as a as a sport outdoor is deteriorating in usage. You can, if you spend money on it, you can reuse it, but at the same time, the usage of the racquetball is not as high usage as you expect. We don't see any value in maintaining it, so that's another rebuild. The good thing is the fields are in good shape, the shade structure in good shape around the field. Other than that, it's a total rebuild.
Thank you for your presentation. Just just first, so each of you have mentioned safety concerns. You mentioned traffic. You mentioned pool deck and fire safety.
Yes.
So, I mean, I would think that we have to seriously look at that first before anything else. So is it dangerous to operate that facility today?
It isn't dangerous to operate the facility today. It's staff, staff does do maintenance repairs as soon as these safety issues do occur. So, you know, safety is number one.
We're not putting the community in harm's way by allowing the facility to operate in the current time, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, basically, there isn't any value, according to you and those buildings. Administration building, knock it down, replace. Locker room, replace.
Yep.
Multi-purpose room, replace. Pool, study of viability of aquatic. Okay, we want a an Olympic-sized pool that will be able for diving and swimming and all that. Pool equipment needs to be updated if we get a bigger pool.
Yes.
The playground's got drainage problems. Okay, that.
It's a pool associated, so.
The tennis courts, not. Racquetball, replace. Are we talking about safety? If all of those things need to be basically taken out of there because they are a safety factor, we ought to get a very, very good look at these things because there's also a liability problem that we have over here. It's not just, you know, we need to replace this. And I don't even want to ask. I'm afraid of asking how many millions that we're gonna have to spend on this. But then again, that's what we're here for. Thank you.
Councilman?
For sure. I would just like to say thank you for the overall evaluation of the facilities. I think a better way to kind of look at this perspective, it's not dangerous to operate, just not ideal, essentially, and the layout is very outdated, and the proximity of, let's just say, the restrooms to the playground, to the pool with no shower facilities, it's just not a modern design, and certainly doesn't fit the expectations of the high level of community and amenities that Palm Coast has and that that we represent. So, yeah, certainly, I think I appreciate all the safety concerns being addressed immediately. I think any changes to these facilities are what would necessitate an overhaul to every individual asset like we just discussed, but just that the I wanted to emphasize that the facility today is safe to operate, just certainly not ideal. And because of the regression and just the age of the facility, if we were to make modifications that basically require a new component for whatever we were working on at the time. But, yep, I'm with Vice Mayor Brinkeno, and we want to have a facility that is top-notch and can satisfy the needs of the fluid swim team and anyone else who wants to participate in aquatic sports around Palm Coast. So I appreciate the overhaul and just giving it to us like it is and not trying to sugarcoat any of this. So I appreciate it, and I definitely take all this information into concern, so thank you.
Thank you, councilman.
It's it's a lot to absorb all at once, no question about it. I think that I think this might be a situation where maybe our city manager or staff could possibly arrange a field trip for us. I would like to see all of these things firsthand before proceeding.
I only I only suggest individually and absolutely through city manager, but we should probably all go independently.
That's fine.
That's okay. And eyes on would be would be a really good aid in making further discussion and decisions.
Because we're talking, like Councilman Kino said, millions and millions and millions of dollars. And and again, I want to, before we tear down buildings, I want to make sure that we can't just move in at a lower cost and create what we need from them. You'd also mentioned fire safety was an issue in in one of these buildings. Is that not correct?
Yes, one of them.
And, you know, I'd like to know how our fire chief feels about this, because it sounds like it's a major problem to me from the way it's been presented.
Mr. Fire Chief.
Thank you, chief.
Good morning, council. And although I don't share Mr. Hurst's exuberance about how being, he wasn't born yet when this facility, my daughter was born around that time, that doesn't make me feel much better. But the simple fact that when this facility was built, was built under a certain amount of fire codes that were established back then, which were fine. Everything was was according to what the code was. But given every three years, you can expect the fire codes to change to keep up with modern times to, you probably had fifteen, twelve revisions since the codes were established. The parameters of what we're talking about is how many people can fit inside the building as a fire code concern. The doorways are wide enough to accept for a wheelchair to get out for a fire code concern. So the things that are probably brought up in the report have to do with longevity as opposed to if it was built today, it would certainly look a lot different.
All right, good, thank you. Is that, okay, good. Councilman, question?
So I I am all about, I would like to go on a field trip over there. I'd like to see it. It's been some time since I've I've been over over that way, but used that facility for many years. So a few things that that I I just would like to see from the city is, like the mayor had had spoken of earlier, usage reports, so we can kind of get an idea of how many people are using this facility. I know that might be hard with some of them, like the tennis courts or the racquetball courts, but I'd like to know, are they being used and how often? Also, I'd like to see possibly what needs to be done right now at a minimal cost, just to make sure that, like, like other, our our other councilmen and mayor has said, to make sure that it's a safe facility for everybody. So are there some things that that we can do for the time being to make sure that we do have a safe operating facility for our members and for our staff that work there as well? And then if there are a few other things that can be done at a minimal cost, like, is there a way that we can route that water from when we're backwashing the pool to a more reasonable location than under the playground? There's gotta be a better place to put that water. I don't know where it is, but I'd like to see if the city's able to to find a better solution for that. But I think what we're really saying is, the pool's thirty-seven years old. We've got three to thirteen years left out of it on a forty- to fifty-year basis, so we need to start considering how we're gonna move forward. So thank you for bringing this to our pageant today.
Thank you for your comment. Let me make my final comments here.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I just wanted to also remind city council of two things. This is a very wonderful, informative presentation as we prepare and finalize our strategic action plan, and there was two indicated priorities off of your strategic action plan and council priorities in related to this item. And then also Carl Cody, our director of stormwater and engineering, he's also planning the five-year CIP timeline to come to you, and that'll come this summer. And included in those estimates would be some of these items that you that you spoke about today.
Good, very well said, and let me just finish up. So let me just float the unspoken balloon here that's in the room. As we are growing, I don't think there's a doubt in any single council member's mind that a full-blown, full-fledged aquatic facility will be in our future at some distant date, and I'm thinking that we should consider the presentation we heard today and what needs to be done at a minimal cost to be a transitional bridge to that future activity aquatic center. And I think everybody here understands that. So the two things happening, let's make it safe and usable for the short term as we, through our strategic action plan, identify how big and how bold we can go with the aquatic center that well suits the residents of the city of Palm Coast.
I agree with you, and the only other thing that I had to overhear is that, and I wholeheartedly agree with the Councilman Danko regarding the visit, even though I've been there, but I didn't see what needs to be done. I would add that we ought to take, at the same time we do that, somebody from the engineering department and somebody from the fire department, because if we have questions, it'll be good if you ask them right there, I would say. And then just food for thought, food for thought. The usage reports are good, no doubt about it. They're gonna lead us to make an opinion. They're very good, but when the safety concern is more important, in my opinion, than the usage, but that's the thing. And the other thing, now, here's a bomb. Can we scrap all of that and add a new, a new project here at the tennis center? Do we have the room? Would it be easier or not? And transplant everything from there into the new tennis center? So this way we put everything together. I don't know, it's just just food for thought, and.
So a good conversation during your interview process with the strategic action plan, because obviously a lot of moving parts to that. So I think we all see a finish line here. We have to better define it, describe it, and understand what the cost, not just the cost. What are the other funding sources that are available other than our ad valorem tax base that we can find benefactors, stakeholders, and other entities to help us achieve this? I know they're out there, and I know we can find them, and I know the money's out there. So it's a project, it's a process.
I would also like to add that I think it's important that not only we go out there and see this, but I I would like to invite somebody from the Observer to come along so the public gets a sense of why we're gonna have to spend this money, what what the problems are out there, because we can talk about it here, but I I think this might be a challenge for the Observer to look into what's needed and why, to justify these costs and these this plan moving forward. So I know there's a representative sitting over there in the corner, and I would make that suggestion. You are more than welcome to come out when I make my tour, because I think without the public on board and realizing what's at stake, you know, I think it's very important that 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 we we have that transparency.
I mean the media, don't you, the media?
Well, I mean the media, but I'm just saying we've got the Observer here. I we have a radio station, we have the Observer, we don't have a massive media, so.
Rallying public support is important before we dive headfirst into this.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you. Thanks, Seth, for for good presentations today. Very good. All right, we'll move forward now to item number four in the presentations, which will be safety updates. Very appropriate.
Good morning again, Mayor and City Council. Lauren Johnson, Assistant City Manager. We heard from the city council about looking into our safety improvements, and so you will see this presentation is in relation to our protection shields that we have at various locations. We did an inventory of staff feeling comfortable in and around city facilities. So to remain is our city hall customer service areas. That includes the bump out and our permitting desk. We're also keeping some of our protection shields at our parks and recreation facilities, and we are also reopening to utility drive for utility customer service bills, et cetera. And that will happen in early May. We're looking at the first or second week of May. And then to remove, we heard from city council that you would like your shields to be removed, and we can definitely do that. Just wanted to have consensus on moving that forward. And then we will also come to you in a future workshop, which is scheduled for May tenth, to talk about the workshop options, and a comprehensive summary will be a part of that, and that's, you know, bringing council, if if it permits, to the floor to allow open conversation and dialogue and workshop meetings. And what does that look like comprehensively from a safety aspect as well as technology? So that will come fourth, May tenth.
First order of conversation and consensus is, how do you all feel about the the partitions? I think staff needs direction.
Well, if I may, the protection shields, they will remain in city hall customer service. They will remain at park recreation facilities. For me, actually, they're protection, because if the mayor gets mad one day, I'm not gonna get hit with a hammer in the head. It's a little protection here, just sarcastically for those who don't understand this, okay? But I, they don't bother me, to be honest with you. They don't bother me at all, and I don't think that at this point, we completely scotch-free. There's still a good possibility that this darn thing, this COVID thing, it's still amongst us, and if you look around, you still see people here in this room today with masks. So if they go down, to be honest with you, I would feel more comfortable with a mask. I don't think they should go down. Or if you want to keep mine, go ahead, keep mine and just take the other ones down for all I care.
Okay, councilman, how do you feel?
I'm okay either way. I concur that it seems like there's a prevalence that's reoccurring, but I wouldn't mind the removal of the the dais dividers, but I think for city staff, we probably err on side of caution the way that, you know, we should for safety, and also, I think, I also think it's not a bad idea at the customer service interaction points to have a barrier anyway, similar to like, you know, a convenience store or bank or something like that, where there's just something between you and whomever, you know, for security reasons. But I don't have a, I don't really have a qualm with removal of the barriers between us. I mean, yeah, I mean, it goes both ways. It could be protecting me from Vice Mayor Brinkeno as well, so I'm, yeah, I'm impartial.
Okay. Councilman?
Yeah, there are some times where I really want to throw something at Eddie and these things, you know? But I have I have no problem with taking these down. I do understand the safety features that that this type of separation offers staff and customer service more, I'm not, more in case you just encounter an angry person, you want to have that barrier. So I'm good with removing these if everyone else is.
Councilman?
So I am, I'm good with removing them as well, but I also want to respect my fellow councilman, and if he feels more comfortable leaving them up, then I'm okay with leaving them up to respect him.
All right, so I think what you're hearing, because staff needs some direction now. We are all certainly about breaking down any and all barriers that we may, that may exist between any of us up on city council. But with that in mind, my suggestion is, let's hold as-is, because it doesn't cost us anything, until the May tenth workshop, because when we talk about the workshop options, our configurations may in fact change and have some influence on how we are working together across a table or in some other style. So if everybody is okay, let's hold it until after we complete the May tenth workshop.
I completely agree with you, as long as somebody doesn't turn to me and say, Mr. Brankueno, tear. As long as somebody doesn't turn to me and say, "Mr. Branquino, tear down that wall."
And I can still reach you around, so it's not a problem.
That's all right, it's all right.
Does that give staff the direction?
Yes, sir.
Because I wouldn't want to be changing this and find, or leaving something and then finding we're going to be very different. Let's try to be consistent in our approach, in our approach for safety. And I certainly underline, underscore the value of protecting staff at all times who are trafficked with so many more people, that they are much more exposed than we are. So, let that be our priority, and then we'll give you additional direction after the May 10th workshop, okay?
Sounds good, thank you.
Very good. Okay, that'll bring us right down to public participation. Are there any members of the public that would like to make final comments today to city council?
I brought a whole bag of stuff, Mayor. Greg Glossay, President and CEO of the Palm Coast Flagler Regional Chamber. Wanted to say first on the splash pad, just, you know, sitting in the audience, listening to that, I have a two-year-old and a 10-year-old. And, you know, to see such a good thing for this community turn into a negative is just like a heartbreaker. You know, I know you have kids too, Councilman Finelli. So, whatever the chamber can do to be helpful, I don't know what that is, but it's a pretty sad deal. And, you know, to Councilman Finelli's point, every time we're at Holland Park, which is still an awesome park, even without the splash pad stuff, still the kids notice it, and the fencing is less than desirable. My real reason for being up here today was to really thank the city of Palm Coast. We had an event on Saturday, March 26th, the Flagler County Small Business Expo and Conference. And originally, my vision was that we would have, you know, a few dozen vendors, some local businesses, a couple hundred people. And what ended up happening was approximately 200 businesses and a few thousand residents. And that was last, that was two Saturdays ago, around Central Park, around the lake out back. So, you know, I just wanted to say to you, Denise, publicly, and the mayor, and to staff members, you know, thank you for making that a reality. It would not have been as big and as successful as it was if it wasn't for people like city staff, Career Source, Flagler, Florida Healthcare Plans, Flagler County even helped out. And we really did a lot to promote the Be Local, Buy Local campaign for the city. It was a super, super cool vibe. I mean, it was a really a positive vibe. It was a beautiful day. We got a grant from Career Source and financial support from Florida Healthcare Plans, so we didn't have to charge anybody anything. And I think that's part of what led to that kind of a vibe out there. It was a beautiful day, and the goal of this for the grant was to connect local residents with local businesses. And I feel like we were successful in that. So, if it's okay, this is going to be a little weird, but I, as if walking with a gigantic blue IKEA bag up here was not weird. Part of the goal was to discover local businesses. And we discovered Art Among the Flowers, which is a local business over on Cypress Point Parkway. So, Angie is back there. I can't tell you how much, Angie is a city staffer.
Before you, before you cross the line and get us in trouble, let me suggest this, that you offer that contribution to the city of Palm Coast.
Okay, yeah, to the city of Palm Coast. Well, then, let me call out some people specifically. Jared Dawson, your Parks and Rec Supervisor, Angie, Shannon P. Martin, Brittany Kershaw, Lauren Johnston, and even the city manager. I really appreciate just everything that they did. It was a super positive thing.
I see, I see smiles behind you, which you can't see, so that's.
And then, this past weekend was really cool with the Electric Car Club. My two-year-old saw the Easter Bunny for the first time ever. So, I'll stop at the three minutes, but really, just thank you to everybody for a great couple of weeks here as a resident.
Very good, thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to make comment at this time? Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Antonio Amaral Jr. I'm here today to ask this council to look into performing what I call a systems and procedure audit of the departments. I only ask this because of my daily dealings with the city. I've seen many issues repeatedly happen. I have spoken with a few of you about this, but have not heard any motion to look into this. Some examples of what I think, of why I think this needs to be done are, the Building Department twice has been filing invalidation of state law. It's been corrected. As of right now, they're actually on a trajectory of a 30% surplus, again, after just getting done in fixing the problem of why they were in violation. Stormwater Department had, for four years, had money misappropriated from them, you know, in a sum of almost a million dollars, as was noted by staff last year. And still, nothing was asked about why, how, or what was going on. And your Utility Department repeatedly overcharges for water and sewer connection fees. I don't believe that there is any intentional wrongdoing in any way, shape, or form. As you mentioned last week, Mayor, you know, we went from 50 employees to over 500 as a city. I think there's been a loss of interpretation, watering down, if you will. And that might be something where it's more of a, well, that's just the way we've been doing it. So, that's the main reason why I asked for this. You know, and just, you know, if you're going to say, oh, we've had audits in the past. You have audits annually. None of these issues have ever been caught or brought up during these audits. Not because the audit's done improperly, but the audits are based on what I believe is one plus one equals two. And if one plus one equals two at all the departments, the audit's good and good to go. So, I just ask that you spend this time and the money for the system, what I call a system and procedures audit. Make yourselves and the city more transparent for the taxpayers. And I'd be willing to meet with any of you to discuss these matters further individually, if you'd like. Thank you.
We thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment at this time? Seeing none, I will close public comment. And I'm going to move on to city council members. I have two items, if I may. With your permission, I'd like to proceed with two, two items. First, I had a lovely meeting yesterday afternoon with many local veterans in our community at Heroes Park. A local veteran, Mr. Scott Adie, reached out to me with concerns about the park, which promoted the meeting. "Our veterans, who have selflessly served our great country, have my undying respect and gratitude. We can never repay the debt that we owe them. We discussed the current conditions of the park and the need to work together to keep the park a quiet haven, where one can go to reflect, honor, and recognize the sacrifice of our servicemen and women and first responders. Ultimately, we agreed that the group would meet and that the Flagler County Veterans Affairs Council would soon provide a proposal to the city of Palm Coast on how to improve the park through various measures, including adding benches and shade structures, increasing parking, and enhancing the promotion of the BRIC program in order for the public to learn how to commemorate a loved one. I look forward to hearing the consensus of the group and furthering this conversation. I appreciate the opportunity to work together through mutual respect. I personally would like to thank each member of our community who has served and those who are currently serving, and of course, those we have lost. We would not have the peace and safety and freedoms that we have without you. So, for all of those, I hope we communicate, thank you. And the phrase I heard yesterday, which touched my heart over and over again, was "we welcome you home." Okay, so that will be an ongoing discussion on how we will proceed. We will wait for information to come from the Veterans Council, and we'll have future discussion on this issue.
Absolutely.
Okay, and if I may, please indulge me. I have one more item for us to discuss. This is a workshop, which I explained earlier today. And I feel this is very important. To say that my recent city council compensation proposal caused a mighty controversy in this community is an understatement. I have been responding to so many social media posts, phone calls, and emails for several weeks, and I am sincerely appreciative of the fact that my proposition has invoked such robust reaction and discussion. The justification for my support, for my support is still the same. First, when I campaigned for my position, I said that being your mayor would be a learning process and that I would always listen to you, so that I could learn. I hope I can expect the same from all of you. Please know that I am not requesting a salary increase for council for selfish purposes. I am requesting it because I believe this is the best way to serve a Palm Coast as one of the most unrivaled emerging cities in Florida and the entire Northeast region. Palm Coast was beautifully directed and managed by many who have served us all. Our former council's vision was achieved for a city that existed decades ago. The first generation of council members not only established and incorporated our community, but they also wrote the charter, set budgets, and hired a city manager who went on to create a staff that governed about 35,000 residents. Palm Coast was different years ago, smaller and less complex. There remains a huge difference between our past and our present. Our next 21 years will look very different from those past 21. Our next council must be called upon to update all that's been done in the past with a much broader skill set to govern with smart growth, expanding economic goals, and enhanced healthcare, education, and needs. If Palm Coast keeps moving swiftly in this direction, so must city council. The concepts of public service, honor, commitment, and equitable salaries should all be considered and respected equally as we place a value on our qualified candidate's time, devotion, and expertise. I'm sure each values their own work, and therefore, so should we. And we should have the opportunity to do so regardless of their independent wealth, paid profession, or retirement. Four additional topics that I've addressed in my latest correspondence include the following. One, a harmful political environment at our council meetings cannot produce positive thoughts or actions. Unfortunately, our world is facing this issue in all walks of life. I believe that offering higher council compensation to a wider cross-section of our community just may subdue some of the toxicity. Two, every single elected official who is presently serving our entire Flagler County, whether it be a commissioner, school board member, or city council member, cares deeply about our residents. However, each separate city and community has different needs based on size and demographics. The way each entity is governed should also be separate. Number three, my city calendar that I exhibited at last week's council meeting is indeed full. Meetings, events, speeches, and community organization requests are required and expedited by myself as mayor and not intended for the city manager. Number four, salary raises for both city staff and city council are vital to this community. Staff receives raises when appropriate, and so should council. Five, I would like to remind all of you that I have always believed that transparency is the key to avoiding any controversy in our city. Whatever I do, I want to ensure that it's a public process. Indeed, this proposal was a public and legal process, brought to Palm Coast's attention both in print, on social media, and at a live workshop. My intent has always been to be open to you about my feelings towards council salaries. Ultimately, I believe that the city of Palm Coast should step out of its rapidly changing comfort zone to meet future needs aggressively. The original concept of a part-time electorate that is paid, stipended, in exchange for service is most certainly praiseworthy. But it is an outdated concept. Determining and discussing a salary increase for our public officials is the direction we should be approaching with our own collective trust, integrity, honor, and service to Palm Coast. That's the statement I would like the public to be aware of today. The reason I make that statement is because I would like to open up this discussion today to our members of city council to discuss at what level they might feel it be appropriate for city council compensation to be changed. So, I would ask each of you, if you have a comment, to please share it this time.
I do, sir.
Vice Mayor?
All right. Just before I go into it on the veterans, I think that you're doing a very good job on the Veterans Park, and that's do what we need to do in order to keep the veterans so deservedly happy. As to the compensation, everybody knows about it. And Mr. Mayor, I think I'll probably leave you with a question that you don't have to answer if you don't want it. You said that your calendar is full, and that's one of the reasons why you're actually looking for a compensation. My question to you is that, if your calendar wasn't that full, would you still want that compensation? But then again, you don't have to answer that. This job here, still in my opinion, and that's no fine line. This is a duty, in my opinion, still a duty, okay? It's a job that requires a lot of work, no doubt about it. We all knew what was going on over here. We all knew. We changing the rules in the middle of the game. If we are going to go with this astronomical raise, I think we should put it in the hands of the people out there. Tell us, because we got to listen to them. And we just showed them here last week that we not listening to them. When they were here, they were talking to us. Some of us asked them, "Let me listen to you, and then I'll make my decision." We still went against them. So, people of Palm Coast, in my book, you're number one. What you want is number one, not what we want over here. And if anybody hasn't seen the reactions and the discussions, then some of us over here are kind of sleeping. Because if you talk with anybody out there, I guarantee you, anyone, I've yet, I'm yet to meet one, other than the people in this DIAS, that agrees with this raise, everybody out there, talk with people out there. You talk with them, I talk with them, you, every one of us over here, talk with them. We got to listen to these people, and that's exactly what we do. We should do it, listen to the people. And once again, I really do not take it as a compliment. I'm borderline offended that's saying that. If anybody gets a better pay, they'll do a better job than me. I'm actually offended. I don't take that as a compliment, neither me or anybody should do it over here. That's not what I came here for. I came here without an agenda. I have no agenda here. My agenda, it's called Palm Coast, the people of Palm Coast. So, it's borderline offensive to tell me that we need someone with more morals, maybe? Expertise, morals, well, better English, that's a completely different story. But I think I've been getting my message through, okay? And that's what I say, I still don't agree with it. I think that we should bring, this is the wrong time to do it, wrong timing. I think we should put it on a ballot, if we're going to do this much. If we're not going to do this much, if we're going to go for a race that actually, it's more within the things. Honestly, and with all due respect, I mean, with all due respect, we weren't, some of us weren't too happy with giving people that works for this, part of the staff that we so much care for. We weren't going to be able to give them 3%. Now, we're looking at 365, or even more, close to 400. I mean, if that, in my opinion, right now... I mean, if that, in my opinion, right now, this proposal, it's not borderline disrespectful for the people that works for the city, then I don't know what it is. And I made it clear, I think we could do it much better, do it much better by doing the $12,000 to $15,000. For the life of me, I cannot understand why we think that we need somebody more expert in the medical field, for example, a medical doctor. Do you think that a medical doctor would come here for the money? No. Any lawyer, we have lawyers in here. You think they come here for the money? No. They come here because they care for this city. And that's, I believe that all of us, we care for the city, but we just have to listen to the city residents. Thank you.
Thank you. So Mr. Brinkley, I appreciate your comments and you lead into, again, the purpose for this discussion is to reconsider and to discuss the last discussion we have and to make it perfectly clear, based on your comments, the public's comments, the overwhelming majority of comments that I have heard, it may be the right moment to discuss reducing the increase that I had originally suggested in favor of something a bit less and more palatable at this moment in time. Councilman, a question?
Questioned, not necessarily a question, but perhaps a statement, and I'm not certain whether I'll have another opportunity to go through my comments. So I'll leave the salary portion for my last comments, if you don't mind, if we're going through public comment. The first thing I wanted to mention today was Riley Opelka's tremendous success in the Houston Open on Clay Court. It was a privilege to watch him smash dingers and take down everyone who was before him. His game is incredible and I just wanted to say hat off to you, Riley, and the hard work is definitely paying off and it's evident. The second thing I wanted to note was how successful the extravaganza was. I wanted to thank you guys for taking shots on the water, being submerged into the water box. I appreciate you guys. I was with the Sustainability Club over here at City Hall giving rides in electric cars and that went great and I'm really proud of everyone who's part of the Sustainability Club at FPC. I think that's a tremendous effort and it's rare that you find youth leadership that's able to organize an event of that caliber. And thank you to all the coordination that the city played in that as well. So on to the salary. I don't think anything that you said was incorrect. I think the public's pulse on this is very delicate and also one that it just, it never is in good taste to give yourself a raise. But at the end of the day, when legislators are discussing salary, it really comes down to, you know, their role is partially to set the expectations and set their salary. There's no, there's no boss of the legislators, which is a good and a bad thing. For the second time, I would also like to discuss possibly phasing our raises. I don't, I don't, I potentially see the conflict because when I signed up for this job the second time, I still knew I was only making nine grand a year, which is fine and I'm okay with that. And, but do I see a path where we could potentially have more viable candidates because of the salary increase? Absolutely. I do not think that having a council of retirees is something that offers enough diversity to act as a functional council. I think potentially increasing the salary to something that's more applicable or equitable to the school board, I think is a fair recommendation. And I also don't think it's unreasonable to phase the raise in, especially from my position where I only have two years left and I'm term limited. So it's not really going to impact my ability to govern one way or the other. So I'd be willing to not only, A, discuss lowering the raise to something more equitable such as a school board's position, but then also alleviating the concern that I was here, you know, trying to give myself and my own raise and phasing in a raise. So I think those are very viable and, you know, discussions that offer a view that we are prudently moving forward to try to find the best potential path forward for Palm Coast and not necessarily, you know, having any conflict of interest that is very, you know, the public has a perception of this and I just want to ensure that we're operating in best faith. And I think those are two ways to move that discussion forward in that direction.
Okay. So what I'm hearing from Councilman Clufus is a discussion regarding decreasing the compensation discussion to a level similar or at the school board with the inclusion of some or all of the benefit package that accompany that as a discussion. And Councilman, would you like to comment on that?
I'm sorry, I missed a portion. Are you suggesting that we go down to the school board level, but put in the other benefits they get?
Such as like healthcare and?
Healthcare and?
I think that?
Yes, Jim?
Yep, I think that's also open for discussion. I would, I would, the discussion I'm hearing right now is that the mayor potentially thinks that we should lower the total amount of compensation, which is something I'm open for. And I think the school board level of compensation would probably be about $10,000 less from what we had proposed. If my memory serves me correctly, I think it's about $35,000. I think that's probably more palatable, but then also, I don't know the exact value of the benefits package that would go along with that, but yeah, potentially that and phasing it in, if that seems like a more reasonable path forward from what we're hearing from the public's input.
Well, I think that first?
This is discussion, by the way. This is just comments, discussion, this is a workshop.
What the case the mayor presented last week when we read the first ordinance, I think that case is still there. I think it's very valid. That's why I cast a vote for it. Honestly, I've had people come up to me opposed to this, but I've also had people come up to me who recognized it. One of them felt we weren't, didn't deserve a nickel more and they were real rude when they exited this facility too, screaming and shouting at us. I think we did the right thing for the future and, you know, we had more people here upset about the Green Lion than about this paid compensation. So I'm not that concerned about it. I'm willing to stay where we're at and move forward with what we did. I think it's a good move.
Councilman?
So I too, as some of you have stated, have had conversations with a lot of community members and, and there is another side to this. A lot of the conversation I had out in the community was that they do feel that additional compensation is warranted. The conversation then gets into how much and how it's phased in. And, and I appreciate the mayor putting forward this conversation to look at how that, that may come about. I would be amenable to looking at what the appropriate compensation is and how to roll it out. I do hear that the community is concerned about the amount of the compensation and I, I know that a lot of the conversation has been focused on people and not on the position and the requirements of the position. And that's what I've tried to do is separate those, those emotions from the people that I'm hearing from regarding how they feel about certain, certain council members or that such. So really, I'll tell you, and looking at the position, again, I'll tell you right now, it has no impact on me because I won't be here when it goes into effect. I can also tell you though, that I'm sitting up here right now, using vacation time from the school district to make this happen. So it is, it is costing me both time and money to serve the citizens of this community, which I don't think is fair to whoever serves in this seat after me. I, I have thought about if I was interested in this seat in the future, not in this upcoming election, but in the future, how could I balance that? And it would require me to maybe look at a different role, a different job, either within the school district or elsewise, probably a position that was less demanding of my time and money in order to be able to give what this position requires. Right now, I'll tell you, I do work nights and weekends to make this happen. I've been working at least 12-hour days. I leave work and basically go to a second job in order to be educated on all of the needs of the city, to listen to all of the citizens out there and their concerns that are going on, to, to be that positive public figure that I want to be for the city and be at our community events and represent our city well. And it is not a volunteer position by any means. I volunteer on a lot of different committees and organizations throughout our community and have given freely of my time for years. This is well beyond anything of that and, and I believe that most citizens know and understand that. I mean, when you're looking at managing a quarter of a billion dollars and overseeing the safety, welfare, well-being of almost 100,000 citizens, I do believe that more appropriate compensation is warranted. I think it's been overlooked for quite some time and I hope that we can find a way to, to more reasonably compensate council and the mayor for their responsibilities.
Thank you. So my goal here is to find a solution that would represent the unanimity of city council. If we could find a solution that all city council members could be in favor of. The only challenge, if I may ask, is I understand, I think, your point, Vice Mayor, about the residents and certainly we are appreciative of their comments and certainly I, as much as anyone, listen to every single one of them and respond to every single one of them. The gap I find is I don't know if the majority of our residents are expert or familiar with the job function itself and the actual time. We've been trying to share that. At the end of the day, we work for the community. Don't misunderstand me, but there's an education component here that we that have, sit up here in the dais, we have experienced the blood, sweat and tears of what it takes to do the best job we are, we can. We are all, each one of us, honorable, at least, well, men and women up here. So when I say that we understand the details of the job best because we are deep, neck deep in them, we absolutely do understand it. I don't, it's not the, the community or the public's responsibility to understand that detail or to understand what it is that we each experience every day. But there's no doubt that the honor and the care that we all each share with the public is there. So I do think that the decision is, at this point in time, best made by the expertise that is available and I will look forward to discussing the ordinance that's in place at our next business meeting, which we might alter in favor of a discussion that was held today. I don't know, Counselor, if I said that correctly.
Sure.
Why don't you put that in the right words for me? I apologize. I've been saving your voice all day because I know you're having a, yeah.
So yes, because we're in between first and second reading and that's the purpose of a first and second reading, to be able to have the council consider the request, whatever the ordinance is in the sunshine and have discussion and can make changes to an extent. In this instance, what I'm hearing is the change may be to decrease the amount of the compensation. And if that is the case, if that's what's determined at the next meeting, that can be done and the ordinance can be modified at that time and then that can be adopted at the second reading for the amount of compensation that's changing. The title block was sufficient, instead an increase in compensation, that was properly noticed. So you're good as far as the ability to make a change at the second meeting to decrease the amount, if that's what council so decides.
Okay, sorry, good. So this already is an agenda item on our next business meeting. So it's coming back to us at the next meeting for a final decision amongst ourselves on what city council feels. And again, my sincere hope is that we can collaborate and form a consensus to come up with a decision on this issue and, and move forward. So with that, I apologize for taking so much of the public comment time, but thank you.
On my comments, I have something else, but right now, I'm glad we're going the right direction. Right now, we're going the right direction. And so we had 13 people here last week, no doubt about it. But more important, there's a petition out there, what I believe with thousands of signatures already regarding the ballot, putting this on a ballot. So, and that petition is due June 16th. I would like to see if my colleagues would like to know at least the amount of people on that petition before we make any decision. Can we postpone the second reading of this for at least June 16th? I'm asking because this is what I call, listen to the people of Palm Coast, because there's a petition that were supposed to be done May 7th. Now apparently they got an extension to June 16th. And, and if we don't believe it, I believe that petition is already on a thousand.
So Vice Mayor, I appreciate your promoting this, this exercise. I'm not aware of the circulation or the number of signatures on any such petition, nor am I aware of any way to validate the signatures on a position. So I'll ask council, we already have this as an agenda item. It would, and it's already been publicly noticed. It would be inappropriate, I believe, to change that date. Is that correct?
Well, the date could be changed at the meeting and it could be pushed out, but I would warn council that the other timeframe that you're working against is that in the charter, these, any change to compensation would go into effect, well, has to be voted upon six months prior to the next term. So that bumps us up to the beginning of May as far as it being the latest time where this change could be made and become effective within the time period within the charter.
Okay, so apparently we're running out of time on this. Sorry, Mr. Martin, there's nothing your petition, which I signed, is going to do for us. We can't do, we're going to have to make a decision, even though if that, we could always, after this has been approved, we could always, I believe, come back to revisit it and still?
Of course, of course.
I, I didn't know that and that's, that's nice. Now, can we go into the discussion by city councils or?
Yes, please.
Okay, it's not much. The only thing I have is that, you already talked away from me.
Sorry about that.
Riley, Mr. Riley Opelka, congrats. You're number one in the United States and number 17 in the world. A Palm Coastian, proud of you, proud of you. I'm still, I'm, I still want you to come to my house and have a nice Portuguese lunch when you come here. Because I think, even though you could go through the door, even if I have to open a little bit, okay, please come over. Congrats again to the, to the extravaganza. That was really nice. It was good to see all those kids. Some proud mom was there. It was very good, beautiful. The other thing is that today I looked for the first time and it says over here that all, for people here present, all pages and cell phones are to remain off while the city council is in session. I don't know if you're talking about the phones itself being off or just the sounds of it that could, because I don't know if we could tell people, when I have mine on and I have my computer on to tell, shut your phone off. I don't know. Some people may want to record or do something. I just think that this should, I think, my saying, this should be corrected and brought to the point of silence your phones. I think that would be more appropriate to do so. And that was it. And then just something that I read, actually Dunkin' Donuts, which was, you know, one of my favorite places and I do it locally. What's, what's his name over here? Sigmund Freud, he said something that is very, very important, if I may. Being entirely honest with oneself, it's a good exercise. And coming from Sigmund Freud, I'll take it. Thank you. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Councilman?
Nope. The random, my comments I addressed earlier, so thank you for the second opportunity, but I have addressed everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
No comments.
Councilman?
I have a few. Again, I just have to say the extravaganza was exceptional, so. It was great. I enjoy going out. Congratulations to all the people that dunked me. I got dunked more than a few times, so. Mr. Amorout, I appreciate your comments today and I would like to take you up on meeting with you to discuss your concerns. The Ed Foundation had a barbecue on the lawn event to raise money for the Ed Foundation. At Foundation, at a barbecue on the lawn event to raise money for the, at Foundation, it was a great event and very well-attended, so I'd like to thank them for that. And then one last thing, there is a, an event coming up at the Flagler Auditorium. It is a showing of a documentary called Screenagers, and it's regarding teenagers that are growing up in a technological world. And it's really going to be a great event. We ask that teenagers come out with their parents, both middle and high school students come out with their parents and join in a robust discussion and viewing of this documentary on how all of this technology and social media in a digital world is impacting and affecting our youth growing up today. It's on April 26th at 5:00 PM at the Flagler Auditorium. That's it.
Counselor?
I have nothing.
And city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I have just one item. City offices will be closed on Friday, an observation of Good Friday. So I'd like to just thank city council for their support, and I also like to have a shout-out to our employees that are going to be working through the holiday, keeping us safe, and also the employees, I hope you enjoy your time with your family and friends. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Just one quick question. Anthony Amorall Jr., I forgot to ask you, but maybe we can meet after this, regarding your procedure audit. Do you, I don't know if you're suggesting an outside audit, do we have to outside audit, not done in-house? Okay, okay, so that's, but we could talk about it. Thank you, sir.
So with that, I will ask for a motion. Second, all in favor? Thank you.